Please come to order. Welcome everybody to our fiscal 22 budget work session, the final in the balance, May 18th, 2021. We're not going to turn this over to Ms. Cudmore and her staff to present the, some of the finals of decisions we have to make this year for our final budget. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner President Guy, for having us. And this is kind of like, you know, I guess, what, Thanksgiving dinner or something? You know, we've worked so hard to get to this point.
Exactly.
And now we're going to hopefully finish it up and bounce and move on after the day's meeting. So Commissioner, you have this package here, and I'll go through and kind of try to go through the entire package, and then we'll kind of come back to page three, where all the fun will happen. Okay? So the first page one, you have your summary revenues. And you'll see at the bottom, you'll see for FY eight, I mean, May 18th, 2021, you end up right now at about $285 million. And what you'll see on this page is that we kind of broke out the American Rescue Act from the other grants, so that we can kind of see and separate it, because we know that's truly not recurring. And to kind of keep it separated all by itself, and so it doesn't make the other grants look so distorted, just for, you know, visual purposes. Okay? Then you'll see on page two, this is our expenditure summary. So this is where, after your direction that we received last Tuesday, this is where we ended up. And you can see at the bottom of the page, the $284.6 million. That's where we are. And of course, when we updated the American Rescue Act for revenues, we also updated that for the expenses. So remember where that is. It's included in the departments, in the emergency services department. You'll see that 19.6 in that column for the 5/18/2021. That includes the $11 million. Okay? And also on this page, if you go down to the total boards and state agencies as a follow-up, and I don't think you had asked this question at prior budget work sessions, and I don't think I ever addressed it. The Southern Maryland Tri-County Community Action Committee, you can see that we're, it's kind of like in the middle, almost exactly, middle of the page, $16,000. The minimum that we are required to fund that by code is only $4,000. So we are truly exceeding the amount of the minimum. Okay? Just wanted to follow up on that for you. All right. Page three. This is where, you can see the top part of the page is where we ended up. And you can see approved at the May 11th, 2021 budget work session. So everything at the top starts off from the recommended. Okay? And you can see allocate budget over two years. That line is where we're now going to allocate the 11.1. We'll have 11.1 in the FY 2023, also for the American Rescue. Now, you already, if you're looking at that American Rescue column, you'll see that in the recommended budget, you already allocated $992,000. So now, the remaining funds to be allocated, and Dr. Bridgett and I will come back at a later date, and we'll bring you back a plan for the remaining, or if there are any items today that you would like to move over to that column, we'll address that and include whatever your direction is. Okay? So you can see the approved at May 11 budget work session. We're down to 80.75 positions. Okay? Our general revenue, we're at the 285, 285 million, which matches what's on page one. Your use of fund balance, you're at 3.3 million, 652. So you're, you know, we started off at the 11 million, now you're down to 3.6. Your expenses, you can see, we're at the 284.6 million. Your American Rescue, you've got 10.1. And then your emergency service billing column, that's at $3 million. Okay? Below that, so after the budget work session last week, you can see the 398, 893. That is how much your revenues exceeded your expenses after that budget work session. Okay? And then below that, we've got some appeals or items that are proposed being changed based on what was discussed last week. So the first one is the nonprofit appeal. That's the 1,500 bucks for the STEM, that robotics nonprofit that was reviewed, and we're recommending it. Okay? And then the vehicles, we have the vehicles using fund balance. We've got the other vehicles that were new, using fund balance. We've got LoSAP, which was brought up by Commissioner Hewitt, taking additional $3 million. And then after discussion with the Board of Ed, they indicated that the 1.999 that we had in here last week was not needed, because they had found other non-recurring expenses, other revenue available, where they could fund it out of their budget. So they said that they didn't need to have it included in here.
But this late date, they don't need 2 million?
Well, they do, but I think they had identified other sources.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So let's kind of go through. This is, we're going to come back to this, page three. On page four, you've got the FTEs, that total, the 80.75. Okay? You can see that we've got an information technology, we've got two public works, we've got two positions, emergency services, 1.25. The emergency service billing fund has got the 38 positions in there. Okay? The sheriff office has 36 positions. And we kind of noticed the list of the deputies, there's 12 deputies in here, but we had some of the ranks that were included, and we'll clean that up for presentation purposes, if not changing the funding. It's just a description we need to clean up. And I had worked with the sheriff's office, and we'll have an updated version, but everything's the same, it's just the way it's presented. The ranks should be down with the other ranks, and the positions should be by themselves above. Okay? So again, that brings your positions up to 80.75. Okay? Page five is the breakdown of your nonprofit funding that you had approved in the recommended budget. And it now adds the 1.5 for the growing stems at the bottom, which we are recommending. It was reviewed, the appeal was reviewed by myself, Dr. Bridgett, and Chris Casalemas. And we recommend the funding in the 2022 budget. All right? Page six is another recap of the vehicles. Again, remember, we had brought this to you last week. The, all the replacement vehicles were included in fund balance, and we're asking, perhaps we can get all the new vehicles, plus the two vehicles that were included last week, to use fund balance for that. All right? Page seven is just a income tax growth chart. You can see the first column is where we currently are, at our current rate of 3.17. And we are currently at a 3.5% growth. Okay? So depending on what you want to do, if you want to keep your current rate, if you want to change your rate, it kind of shows you where your revenue will be, depending on what, if you make, decide to make any changes on that, just for a good reference page. Page eight, this brings back the property tax credits we had discussed. And if you kind of go to the middle, kind of skip through the green, but if you go back, when we were, we talked about these tax credits at the February 23rd, the second, March 2nd, and the March 9th budget work sessions. And realistically, the first one, kind of like in a beige, the 272,100, is really an expansion of the tax credit that's above for the 75,000, where they're opening up and making eligible for more people based on the expansion. And the gray are the tax credits that totals about 1.5 million. And we had provided, I think, additional information from legal, where they had provided all of it, and I think that you, you didn't make a decision on either one. But then the yellow, after legal had gone through all of the legislation that had come from Annapolis, and I tell you, it was a stack, you know, looked like a big dictionary full of information. I mean, there was a lot of things that had gone through Annapolis. But the one thing that was brought to my attention, that almost the biggest impact, was this House Bill 1311, SB Senate Bill 269. And this is a property tax exemption for disabled active-duty service members that are disabled, and veterans, and surviving spouses. It's actually a refund that can actually be run, refunded, based, and go back to 2018. And we had talked to Mr. Deegan over at their local office, and he said, this has got the, probably the biggest impact that could hit the local. So it's going to be refunds on state, local, and municipalities. And he said, we could have an impact of roughly $2.5 million. And this is effective June 1st. So I wanted to provide this and show this to you, and then the additional information is in the back, more on the fiscal note. But at this point, with that $2.5 million, and really not knowing the true impact, I'm not recommending you, at this point, to do any additional tax credits until we know the impact of this, because it's probably going to be, it could be about 300 veterans in the county, and it goes back to 2018. But I mean, that's truly up to you. But if you were going to do a tax credit, I would recommend, if you, outside of that, I would do expanding what we are already doing. But again, that's your decision. All right? Page nine is the Recreation Community Center YMCA project. And we brought this back to you, because we had increased the engineering and survey when we had the presentation here, I think, a few weeks ago, knowing that we needed more funding in here, the A&E. So you can see that in FY 20, so FY 22, the funding did not change. The comment changed above, where it says, "On May 11th, the commissioner requested authorized expenditure of the 450 in the A&E to enable site selection and development of a nonprofit in fundraising." And then 581,000 was added to FY 2023, to the engineering survey, to make sure we had enough money.
Well, tell me, we still need to do site selection. We still need, we can do conceptuals as to what we think it is. We still need to figure out the configuration of the building. Is this money needed now?
Well, it shows that it's in FY 2023.
Okay.
So it's in the out year. It's not, it's not going to impact your 22 at all.
Now, we have a county policy on A&E percentages, and that's...
7%.
Yep, 7%.
So this equals 7%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So that keeps consistent with what we, all right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And then on page 10, it just info from the 90-day report that we normally included. I pretty much usually like to include that in your first budget work session after the ending, but I didn't make it in time. So here's the information that was on the 90-day report. And one of the items that was in there was on the federal funding, under the American Rescue Act. And you can see that they're, they're saying FY 22. So how we have it budgeted in FY 22 is what the state is also saying. But we're going to split it up, because in the two years, '22 and '23, because we have, it ends like December 2023. So we have time to spend this. And then you can see on page 11, the chart for all the counties and the municipalities. And you can see the county, there's our 22 that we've been talking about, and municipal, 3.2. So the total likely that's coming to the county is 25.2. And we're still, we've gotten some preliminary information, and Dr. Bridgett and I have reviewed it, and we're, we're still working and trying to get more info on exactly when the plan will need to go up, and when the funding would come. Okay? Then on page 12, we show our pages that are in the 90-day report, just specifically to St. Mary's County. Okay? So it shows the direct aid and retirement payments. And it kind of shows you where, what was received in 2021, which is very nice. And then the amount that's going to be for 2022. All righty. So the first, you know, little area on page 12 is all about the grants for the Board of Ed, the different ones that they receive. And it does show that, it appears that they'll get an increase of 3.7. Okay? The libraries and the other agencies are all in here, and, and it goes into page 13. It talks about retirement payments, estimated state spending on selected health, you know, pretty much the funding on Medicaid, social services, senior citizens, and everything that's going to be as far as the state funding for the next fiscal year. So it's really a nice display of all the programs and everything that was approved for the county. All right? Then on page 16 is where I was talking about the fiscal note on the property tax exemption. More info on that impact that we could see of roughly $2.5 million. And that kind of goes in all the way to page 20. And then we did receive an additional written comment after the public hearing, and that's on page 21. Okay? And ends on 22. So that is the entire package. So now, if you have any questions, if not, we'll go back to our page three.
The only question I have is on this bill.
Yes, sir.
HB 1311. Is this mandated by the state, or is this a...
It's voluntary.
Voluntary, okay. That's why I wanted to make sure.
It's a big discussion at MACO.
So to start off with the easy stuff, I support the nonprofit appeal.
Yeah.
That's an easy one, yes. Okay, so you, you support that. Okay.
Well, tell me, do you have, don't you have a list here of four through nine, or pages four through nine, that you need decisions on, the very first page?
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, would it be wise just to go down that, so we can cut to the chase, then get any more information we need? You can...
Sure.
Provide it?
Sure, I can do that.
Well, it's up to Commissioner President.
Commissioner President Guy, is that what you...
So you want to start on page four?
No, I'm starting, this opening page that talked about the decisions they're needing.
Right.
We will need the following decisions.
I understand, I understand. I understand, I understand.
Right, so we can work our way through that.
Page three was the appeal with STEM...
Right. New vehicles, LoSAP, additional...
STEM, non-vehicle, rest, staff, position allocation, remove of VOE.
Yeah, just go through each one, so we can stay focused on.
Sure, that's a great idea.
And I want to make sure we have a good vote this time. It was, last time was a little contentious about people nodding their heads, and can't hear somebody. We haven't got any masks now, so we can easily speak out.
And we appreciate that in finance, because there was a number of us that had to go and wash the tape.
We were going all through last, last week's hearing, just to find out who said yes, who said no, who didn't say anything. So if I have to ask for a clear vote, I will go one by one, but I don't want to do that. If I have to, I will. Okay.
Well, it could be messed up a little bit along the way here, if you go down the list. But we can, we can go within, bounce back and forth a little bit.
Yeah. Well, so let's, let's get back to page three. This is really where it'll help, because like I said earlier, when we left out of here, revenues had exceeded expenses by 398. So you have that available now, before you do anything. Okay? And you can put that in the commissioner's emergency reserve and be done for the day. How simple that would be. But we're not going to do that, because we've already had an approval of the nonprofit appeal. So, but do we have consensus on that appeal?
The 1,500?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So we got, you got three.
Right. So then, the vehicles approved on May 11th, the $95,000. That's for the emergency management tech service vehicle, and the health, oh, that's not that. And it's the Recreation and Parks new vehicle, using fund balance for that.
Okay. Again, the exempt financing is sub 2%?
That was, you mean, the last one we just received?
Yeah. If we exempt financing, what would it cost us?
It was, I think, a point, it was a real load rate. I think it was a 0.97. We were just trying to not have to go and do an exempt financing and use fund balance. But I mean, it was a very low rate, and it was for five years.
All right. But you think we can do that and still meet the 3 million for LoSAP? We don't have to deduct the LoSAP?
Right. Right now, we could do the LoSAP and with the reduction of the Board of Ed non-recurring, and you can see...
Okay, that's...
We're okay. If you look at page three, we did put some of these items on here.
I got you, I got you. The 1-9999-10...
Comes out.
And...
Right.
VOE, thank you for not needing it, allows us to, okay.
Right.
I can go with the...
The vehicles, okay. And then also below that, purchased vehicles using exempt financing. Those are the other vehicles that were on page, let me get my pages straight, page six, the new vehicle. So if you approve that to use fund balance, then we will not be doing an exempt financing next year. And...
And that's a million, what, 37,000?
Right. Right. And you still have money left over of your 11, so that takes care of that. So do we have consensus to use fund balance for...
Vehicles.
The new vehicles?
Yes.
Say yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
For new vehicles.
Thank you very much.
Got it.
And then LoSAP, there was discussion of adding an additional $3 million and using fund balance for that.
I'm going to throw the first curveball.
Wonderful.
You're welcome. So over the weekend, I had a conversation with a few people, including Mrs. Bailey and the Board of Ed. And what was brought up was, you know, we're going to be getting a lot of money from the feds, as you clearly pointed out, through a variety of issues. And as the Board of Ed says, they really don't need our 1.9 million and can cover it themselves. So my suggestion would be, we take the 1.999 million, call it 2 million, and we decrease the LoSAP from 3 million to 2 million, giving us $3 million. And for the $3 million, we build a turf field at each of the high schools.
Well, I can support the idea, because I think turf fields at the high schools are important. But I would say to you, LoSAP needs the help. But I also say to you this, we probably have a fund balance coming in, and I think they're going to have one too. This might be a better topic for the fall, after we get our, after we both get our audits, and we see what our fund balances are, because even if they were to do the fields, they'd have to wait for after the fall sports to be over with. And it seems like it would make sense to, if we, once we identify the fund balances, the amounts we all have, then we can go ahead and move forward and try and have them done by April, or whenever the spring sports start. But maybe Mr. Shepherd can help us with a timeline for that.
Well, this is really good, actually, because I know Mr. Shepherd's been working on this for 45 days, conversations I've had with him, and Ms. Bailey, and Dr. Smith, about getting turf fields in there, and a multi-use across an MOU for Parks and Rec. So this may work out really good.
Timeline? Money is allocated, let's say, beginning July 1. Is that what we're saying here? When we had it allocated in our second term last year, we began that second set of fields after the permit process, right after the new year. So you probably wouldn't be able to start construction in the fall, anyway. And that would let, and then we got on our first field, April the 15th. So I think that through money allocated July 1, we were on our first field by April 15th at Lancaster Park, and we just completed the third one. Because they do them kind of concurrently, so you could get them in from that month from after the new year. And it could be quicker, but that's, that, but it would, like you said, Commissioner Hewitt, after the fall sports season, you could definitely have them ready, most likely, for the spring.
So, so tell me this, though. I know we're talking 1.5 million for these turf fields for the schools, and they're a little bit more expensive. Tell, tell us why.
Well, I heard...
Did we know that they're 1.5 million for the turf field?
Well, I heard...
Heard 3 million for...
Well, we just, they're different. In other words, their sizes are different, what their needs are, and grading. And remember that stall stabilization that we talked about before, but we did save on some of that. I'm getting ready to return some of that. That's hard, but I, well, we'll do it. But you heard Commissioner Morgan talk about a million dollars, because Lancaster Park, that field alone was 973 this last time, $973,000 the PO was cut there. But when you go into the high schools, and I've been talking with Jeff Kleis and Jeff Yosa Field Turf, those are a little more expensive, because anything that's done between the tracks costs more money. One, you probably have to go back and do some track repair. Your grading's different. So just from the regional director, probably, you got to think anywhere between that 1-2 to 1-5 for a high school field inside of the tracks. But you're not putting up lights there. There are some other things that you don't have to do. Because remember, we had a light all of ours, and that added about $300,000 for every field.
Well, so how is the MOU you've been working on with the schools? How's that coming along with interplay and all the fields?
Well, right now, we're still, I'm still to having discussions with staff from the schools, some of the athletic directors, about 90-foot diamonds, about use of more contained space used at the school. So good, strong discussion, but everything is moving forward. There's not been any, any challenges there for us to have a stronger use and a stronger partnership. We already have a great one, but this would make it even far better.
Was, I know Dr. Smith is here on the fields. Have any of the staff that are going to have to implement this at the schools been involved in these conversations about the turf fields? Have you spoken to parents about turf fields? Has there been any of that done before this money's allocated? Because I know there's mixed emotions about it.
For what it's worth, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I would just want to make sure we pay our teachers before we put in sports fields.
Right.
For different pots of money.
Oh, they aren't, not necessarily.
Well, so turf fields have been a conversation that have been going on in St. Mary's County for, I don't know, since there were turf fields. And the, one of the things that always stood in our way is not having the upfront capital to be able to do all three at the same time. So you'd be always, one gets it first, and the other, then the other, then the other. And a lot of the conversations that I know that Mr. Shepherd has been having with Mike Watson, who is, oversees athletics, as well as health PE and all the fields and building use, is that to be able to do it comprehensively, that means that kids in our county would be able, from the very start, to either be playing on the beautiful Bermuda fields that we have, or artificial turf, all the way up through the high schools themselves. Once we move to artificial turf, as opposed to what we currently have, Bermuda, we'd be able to use them, we, we, there would be no rest period required. So as soon as any one of our seasons ended, or when we weren't using them for school sports, they would be available then for park and recs and tournaments and things like that. And anybody that has children, you just wait. You'll be, you go to a lot of these tournaments, and they'll actually do them in school stadiums, because you can bring a great deal of people in. They are already lit. We already have, we're upgrading all of the booths for sound and everything like that. So it creates quite a, quite an inviting environment for tournament play.
I mean, also with the turf fields, I know there's grant funding that, or bond money that's available every year from the Senate. So that might help compensate some of the, the cost. I know Senator Bailey was able to get grant funding for the Chopticon booth.
Right, for the booth, right.
Right. So I do know that's allocated. It wasn't used in years prior, but he was able to latch on to it and get that. Our schedule is, our Parks and Rec and Stolling Field schedule's a little different. How...
I mean, we, the thing is, in, and again, this has been a conversation that we've been having for the longest time, all three of the athletic coordinators, athletic directors at each one of the schools would more than welcome and do whatever needed to be done to have their schools transferred over to an artificial turf playing field. So you'd be, you'd, you'd find the most willing participants to share the, the experience of, of moving them over. I don't know, I don't know what the cost will be. I've heard anywhere from 1 to 1.5, but that's, we need to have somebody come down. I know that, you know, this, that can be something that can be coordinated quite quickly. You have, there's really only two people that, there's only two companies that do artificial turf fields in the, in schools, pretty much. So you're kind of directed toward them, and I think we have a great, you already have a great working relationship with, with the grant vendor.
The other question I would have is, since this is a CIP project for the schools, would it have to go in the CIP that gets submitted up to the state? Or would the schools run the project, and we just allocate the money?
So the, the CIP projects that go to the state are the ones that we're seeking state funding for, to be completely a local project. So with, with your approval and with the board's approval, we'd move forward with it as a CIP project, like any other, for the 2022 school year. We'd be very thankful for, for the, for the investment in our facilities, and our kids, and our larger community.
All right. You have a question, Commissioner, Dr. Smith?
Well, I just know that, as you said, this has been a discussion for 11 years. And I know, I know, from sitting here, it's never been something that you've brought to us.
No.
So in this case, I'm saying, we're bringing it to you.
Yes. And, and you bringing it to us, we are very much encouraged and welcome, welcome the And you bringing it to us, we are very much encouraged and welcome the, welcome the discussion. In the past, we have always been, we're in very rarefied air. And if we have an opportunity with, with one-time funds that we, that we haven't seen before, how great to make a true investment in our kids and our community.
And also, this would do a big investment for the county, too, as far as sports complex type thing.
Absolutely.
Especially putting Leonard Town and Gray Mills closer into Lexington Park area, with all the fields we already have there. It would be a tremendous asset for continued tournament plays and whatever.
Absolutely.
Well, that, my logic was, you have one-time money, and it might be a one-time good deal. So, my logic was, when you get a one-time good deal, you sometimes have to take one-time-
You gotta run with it. You gotta run with it. You gotta do the cap and premise that you can with that, no doubt.
But Dr. Smith, I think we have, you're right about equity. If you're gonna do one, you gotta do three.
Right. That's always, that's always-
I agree. So, that's where I'm, Commissioner Morgan, that's where I'm coming from. If we don't put up enough to do all three, then maybe what we can do is wait till we know either we got it and they got it, and it's a 60-40 split, or 70-30. But I think, at the end of the day, the benefit to the, to the schools, to the athletes, to the county, to the number of fields that'll be available to us for all these activities, it'll be a win-win. But you won't get your fund balance information back until October. Is that true?
Well, realistically, it's the end of May. We pretty much know where our fund balance is, is gonna be. In fact, that's why we're comfortable saying that the 1.99 that we originally requested from your, as one-time funds, we feel fairly confident that we're gonna end up with that amount of money at the end of this year. We feel, you know, we can, you pretty, you run, you know where you are right now. So, you should have a pretty clear indication of where you're gonna end up. Now, of course, the books will be closed, and there'll be all the reconciliation, and we won't come back publicly to talk about what that number is until September, October. But we'll have it internally, we already have it internally. So, that's pretty much, that's pretty much where we're, where we're working. And this is, this is where we were last year, when we knew we were gonna recognize a substantial fund balance, because the closure of school for the last quarter of the year, and all the savings that took place, because we weren't running buses and everything like that. And so, we knew, we felt confident that we would have $6 million worth of fund balance. And so, we took that six, that anticipated $6 million worth of fund balance and built it into this year's budget as one-time, non-recurring costs. And we intend to do the exact same thing at the end of this year. We're, we're anticipating recognizing a little over a $6 million fund balance, and that fund balance will be built directly into next year's budget, specifically with $2 million of it going for technology.
Sounds like you could put the fields in yourself.
Well, the other $4 million is also being spent, spent on things like OPEB contributions. So, just like you are being good stewards with and considering LoSAP, we are doing the same with our OPEB contributions and things like that.
That's good. Glad to hear.
And I know that you, you like it when we contribute to OPEB, so that, that is-
Well, it's not about me, sir. But I think it's about us working together to get something that's good for everybody in the county. So, I appreciate that. But back to Mr. Morgan, Commissioner Morgan, I still believe this 3 million for LoSAP pumps it up into a different level with fund managers and people to be able to use that.
I just, I'm thinking, I said, we have, we, if, I would say, I concur with part of that. However, I'm trying to balance out the fact that if we do come back with fund balance, we can re, I'd rather corner off the money early to build these fields, and know that's a one-time deal. And if we come back with a fund balance we can adjust, we can always add to our LoSAP later. But if, I don't think, if we don't do it now, I don't see how the cash flow will work over the next 18 months-
Well, I guess what I would see is-
-to get where we wanna be at the end of the day.
We did the 2 million that we were talking about already, and then let them pick up the rest out of their fund balance. It still gives them enough to do the 4 million, whatever else they got in mind. I just think this is kind of all, kind of coming up at the last hour, the last moment, the last hour. Because this is the first I heard of it, was this week, that we may, you know, consider taking the 2 million, and that you wouldn't need it. That was, I heard, I talked to Ms. Bailey the other day, and I heard that. So, it's kind of new to me, but I still believe-
Well, I think you said that last week.
I said that at the budget session.
Yeah, you said that last week, you didn't need it.
Yes, I didn't hear about the turf fields at high schools last week.
Well, the turf field conversation has been going on-
Oh, no, no.
-a long time, but more so in the last 60 days. I'd say it was 60 days. I went to Mr. Shepherd, and I had a conversation with him, because I've had conversations with Dr. Smith and, and Ms. Bailey about expanding our Parks and Recs, allow, allowing high school to play on our turf fields. Schools, you know, basically, all the fields are taxpayer dollars, right? And it's a team effort. So, Art has been working on this with the school system. The turf fields came up in the conversation with Ms. Bailey, but it also was part of the monies, the bonding authority money that could be had in the next legislative session. So, it wasn't something that we were having a conversation about doing now. It was more so, okay, let's get with Senator Bailey, let's get with Delegate Morgan, let's find out what we're getting on the bonding. And then we can go ahead in the next budget, have our MOUs finalized about interplay, and then work the turf fields in on a schedule that also works for the school system, because construction needs to take place when they're not playing. So, it's more of a summertime-type construction. So, it needs to be worked out that way. So, to your point, that this has been a, a longer conversation, that now it's being expedited.
And so, the, and the other thought, the other thought is, and this has always been the way I've approached budget, and fund balance. So, at the end of the year, if we have an operating, recurring fund balance, we want to take that, that money originally allocated to staff and to students and to the instruction of children, and put that back in. So, that's why we're more than comfortable recognizing that we're gonna have a fund balance, and we're going to take a portion of that fund balance and put it right back into the classroom with technology and things we had originally asked for you, but we realize we have the capacity to carry ourselves. So, the, the money is all staying, right, with staff and students and things such as that. Same thing with an OPEB contribution. We have money left over, we're putting, we're paying it to OPEB, but that's, that ultimately is a long-term benefit for the employees that we have. Something like artificial turf fields, that is a capital improvement. That is a capital improvement project. And we haven't brought it forward, because we've been very judicious in the capital improvement projects that we've brought forward to you, things like, we need new roofs, we need new HVAC, we need new windows for schools. And they, so we haven't, this is, this is, and, this is above and beyond. This is an extra thing. We do have three fields, and they're Bermuda grass, and they are, they're, they're labor-intensive to make sure that they're maintained, but they're also restrictive as far as who can use the facility. If by working together, we can come to a point where we install three artificial turf fields with money that, with fund balance that you recognize, or with CARES money, or with whatever, how wonderful to put forth that CIP project, being brought forward by Commissioner Morgan. I, I'm very, I'm very receptive to it as a capital improvement project, because that's truly what it is.
The reservations, I share Commissioner Colvin's reservation, but I also share the reservation that this hasn't been brought before your board for approval.
Right.
You know, I'm sure there's gonna be parents that want to have their say before the money's allocated. And then also the planning phase, because doing all three high schools at once is probably not gonna happen, because you're gonna be displacing. And what if someone, if a project lays behind, what are you gonna do for football season, lacrosse season, et cetera, et cetera? So, I'm sure there needs to be a plan in place, where, to Commissioner Hewitt's point, it may be something that needs to be an every FY, or every school year it's done, but the money's allocated, and additional fund balance is gonna be there in December, anyway. So, I think there may be some planning that needs to happen with it, rather than just throwing it right at.
I'm sure with Mr. Shepherd and his school staff, that they'll figure out what's the best timing for this. I have confidence that they can do that.
Absolutely.
I'm really all for getting these turf fields at the schools. Right now, we got, we got to funding, and we have, we know what's gonna happen next year. It's just, we don't know. So, this year, the money's there, and I think we should move forward.
Well, Dr. Smith, this is the first I'm hearing of the turf fields at the high schools in this budget context, but I think it's a great thing. And I think I'm a big fan of using our fund balance. But I'm concerned about you meeting your obligations to the teachers, too. So, my only hesitancy for bringing this up is that we can use a portion of our fund balance to cover our nonprofits, and that would free up additional revenue that we can use to cover your negotiated agreement.
Well, Commissioner Colvin, I mean, further than that, earlier this week, I spoke with Dr. Bridget, and for two years, we can fund the nonprofits out of the, it's not the American Rescue, is it? It's the American Rescue that we just got, right?
That we just got?
Right.
American Rescue?
Right. So, she was able to drill down into it. And for two years, we can actually fund our nonprofits. So, we don't even need to touch our fund balance or operating, so we can move them out of operating, use that grant money. I think Commissioner Hewitt's suggestion on LoSAP actually can be there. And I still think that we could probably do the turf fields, and not only meet the negotiated agreement, but also take care of the sheriff's office at the same time with a balanced budget.
I like that.
I mean, it's, it's straightforward.
Just to clarify, for Jeanette, it's not the American Rescue that I think Commissioner-
It's the one before that.
Collins, right. I mean, we're not there yet. And so, last year or the year before is when they used the American, this, for, for the last year. Did they use American Rescue?
No.
No.
Used it once.
Right, one.
They used fund balance one time.
Right.
Just one time.
It was, which, I don't remember which grant it, it's the 22 million that just came down, that we'd be able to-
The American Rescue that we're gonna split.
Right. It's the American Rescue that we'd be able to use to fund the nonprofits.
Going forward.
Going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, meaning this, yes, not going in reverse, going forward. So, this, this FY and the next FY, we'd be able to use to fund the nonprofits, which frees up that money in the operating, as well as the fund balance. So, it-
And that's a qualified, it would? Yes, it would.
Yeah.
All five for that?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, Dr. Bridget drilled down into it.
After two years, we didn't have to go back to-
Fund balance, or operating.
Or recurring, yeah.
Yeah, it would be fund balance.
As recurring expense.
Yeah, so-
You gotta understand, we're talking about recurring expense here.
Well, it's not recurring in the sense that they apply every time.
But still, it's, it's not gonna recur, and spend a million or better every year.
But that's not how grant funding works. I mean, grant funding is what is available at the time. So, when the governor's office of Crime, Control and Prevention does the police recruitment and retention grant, they say, we've been given this by the feds-
Went on for many years.
This is, this is what's available. So, you have 1.3 million, and it goes to everybody. It's the same thing with any other grant that comes down for gun violence reduction. They have $1 million, it gets divvied up. It, it's, it's not operating revenue. It is money that is allocated from outside of that. So, it would be fund balance that would be used.
You know, I've sat here for a number of years and done this. And it wasn't until last year, we used fund balance to pay for the nonprofits, because we didn't have the money last year.
Right.
I'm not ready to sit here and make this a 180 switch forever. We have the money programmed now into the general budget. It's being, we're using recurring dollars to pay for the nonprofits. So, I see no reason, you know, to start switching, when it was a one-time anomaly last year, because of what happened, that we went to fund balance, use it. But then to sit there and use the manna from heaven that the federal government is sending down, or something else, to, you know, switch what we're doing perpetually, when you did something one time.
But I think it comes down to making the most efficient use of the taxpayer dollars. That's-
And we are.
We are.
Well, I mean-
I believe we are, yeah.
Using operating revenue to fund grants is not efficient. There is no other county, and I've called them, that uses operating revenue to fund grants. The state of Maryland does not use operating revenue to fund grants. The feds do not use operating revenue to fund grants. They allocate the money to the side, it is a one-time expense. If that money is not there, then you don't get grant funding. So, the thing is, is it's not efficient if it's not the standard. So, we're using-
Not there, you're telling them to eliminate the-
That's how grants work.
Just eliminate nonprofits.
If the grant funding is not there, you don't get the money. But the thing is, is-
It comes down to a decision of what are you gonna prioritize at the end of the day? And if we decide not to prioritize the Board of Education's negotiated agreement, that's what the commissioners decide.
Yeah.
I mean-
But I mean, it's, we always, always, historically, have fund balance. So, we're sitting here arguing or discussing whether or not we're gonna have fund balance available, when we're talking about allocating $3 million in turf fields. So, then it comes down to prioritizing what you're gonna do. So, do you fund nonprofits, or you build a turf field with one-time expenses?
I'm gonna make the motion that the nonprofits be funded out of our general revenue fund.
Second. Any more discussion?
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
No.
Aye's got it.
Let's get back to LoSAP. I still think 3 million's the number.
So, where does this 3 million number come from, though?
Coming out of the fund balance.
No, 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 no. Where, how do we know that this 3 million gets us to where we need to be?
Well, we could actually do more if we did five, six.
I agree.
But the point is, we're 17 million down. And what we've heard from our market, our new people, is that, you know, a lot of this money, it hasn't really built up very much compared to the OPEB or the SORP, because the amount's been really low, and it's been mainly held in cash. So, getting more in there makes it more, let's say, attractive. That's my term. There's probably another term for it. For money managers to be able to invest, because they usually want set amounts of money to go into something. And I just think that gets us a leg up on the LoSAP, keeps it sustainable, like our OPEB is now sustainable, and our SORP is sustainable.
I'm not opposed to funding LoSAP more. I think that's a good thing.
I mean, the only reason I'm saying three, I'd like to do five if we had it. But I just think it's a good thing to put it away now that we have this-
Right.
-reserve, and put it to work for us. Because it's a, LoSAP's not going away. We're gonna have to pay that, as long as these people are.
Well, we had one point, we already allocated 1.2, we're adding an extra bonus of 3 to LoSAP, correct? So, it'll be 4.2 going into LoSAP this year.
Yeah, 1.2 is being used right now to fund the LoSAP.
So, we do this right?
For the LoSAP and the, right, in that emergency services support fund.
If we do 2 million more, it'd be 3.2 million into LoSAP. Is that right?
You add 2, it would be, yes.
3.2.
It would be 3.2. So, reduce, do we have?
Well, let's figure out what we're gonna do with the other million.
Right.
If you do 3, that's not enough to do 3 fields.
No, what I'm suggesting is, we're already doing 1.2. That's given.
Yeah.
We had 3 extra million dollars in the fund balance of the 11 million, so we suggested, you had suggested previously, of the 11, we put 3 of that into, extra to the LoSAP. Then I'm saying here, because of what, we have an unprecedented opportunity here to build the turf fields for the schools. Again, equality, everybody gets the same. And as I said, this was when, when we had this, Art, we've had this discussion before, Dr. Smith, with Superintendent.
We certainly have.
And Leonard Town was the big advocate for the turf field, and their parents' organizations and everybody else came and said, we want turf fields at Leonard Town, we're gonna raise money for turf fields at Leonard Town. And the board sat there and said, we cannot just treat Leonard Town separately, because they can raise the money, because then Gray Mills and Chopticon are left to the short end of the stick. So, it never went anywhere.
Right.
So, now, am I pretty close on where we are?
Spot on, sir.
So, now, we're at the point that we have, again, a fund balance. And the suggestion I'm making is, because we have this unprecedented amount of money coming in from the feds, and the state, that we take the 2 million, and we take a million coming in from the feds and the state, that we take the 2 million and we take a million off of the LoSAP, instead of contributing an extra 3 million, contribute 2 million.
Okay, I'm with you.
You're still getting 3.2.
But still, we still have 1,614,522 in that fund balance.
Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith, excuse me. What is the, what is the remaining amount exactly?
$779,000 is what we need to get to fully fund the negotiated agreement.
We haven't gotten that for you.
Yeah.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to fund $779,000 to the Board of Education to fully fund the negotiated agreement.
Well, second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Smith, that'll get you where you need to get.
We haven't voted.
No, I'm asking.
No, we're going to get it over with now.
And we presented at the last board meeting, we talked about how with the, with what was allocated at the last budget work session, that left us with a $2 million deficit. We went back and we reworked and we worked with Care First to talk about, we had originally programmed in a 5% increase to healthcare costs for the 2022 school year. And working back with Care First, Care First actually took into account that we were going to raise our stop loss from $250,000 to $350,000. And as a result of raising that stop loss and looking at the actuals, they recommended that we only increase our healthcare cost by 1%. So in doing that, that freed up a great deal of revenue. And we also look to the fact that next year, we will be increasing our healthcare contribution for people who wish to maintain the triple option. I think that's similar to what you have. Next year, it will go up to 22.5% for the employee contribution for triple option, and we will cover 77.5. And in 2023, it will go, it'll go to 25% for the employees carrying that cost, and we will, the system will carry 75. What we've been doing is we've been trying to incentivize moving people away from the triple option to HMO. And by making the HMO a less percentage than the triple option, we've been able to draw 3/4 of all of our employees into triple option. They've been quite happy with the product. So because of all of that, we could scrap out 1.2 million, and that left $779,000 short, and $779,000 for a total of 114.8 million. I think that's the approximately number. We're done. We will fully fund the negotiated agreement. We will be, we will be moving forward and.
Now, does that include the needs of the bus drivers?
That includes the bus drivers as well. That includes.
The bus drivers are already included in here, period. They're everything, you're.
They were included last week, right?
They were included last week. Yeah.
So at that point, I don't think you'd have anybody coming back and everybody, everybody's needs had been addressed.
Now, how big is your total budget, both state and county? 220 million?
Uh, 233 million. $233 million is proposed for next year, up from $232 million, which it was this year. Our overall budget is only increasing by $1 million. The challenge is, we built in $6 million worth of fund balance to cover one-time costs. And with the pandemic and where we sit, that unfortunately falls to the only people who can increase our funding, which is you gentlemen before us. So that's why I keep on coming back. But we are so close, we are $779,000 away from me being able to go back and say we have a fully funded negotiated agreement and a wonderful working partnership with our county commissioners and even perhaps the hopes for a capital improvement project that would net us three artificial turf fields and really catapult this county into quite an attractive venue to bring down outside sports tournaments. I see nothing but win. I see smiles and.
Any other questions, commissioners? Like anything else? Okay, I have a first and a second for the, was it, again, John, what is it, 779,000?
Yep.
$779,000.
I want a roll call vote.
No.
Morgan, no?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
There you have it.
But Dr. Smith, it's not over yet.
It's dead now.
But it's not over yet. Next. Okay, so what are we doing with LoSAP? Two million?
I still want to put the 2 million, extra 2 million to LoSAP on top of the 1.2. Use the 2 million of the Board of Ed to get these turf fields started because I'm of the constant belief, if we don't get it done now, it's not going to get done.
I agree. What are you going to do, though, if we don't have enough to get all three? Do we do some and not do all three?
We're going to have to figure it out. But if we don't put the initial, if we don't at least put the marker down and have 3 million to start, we're never going to get there.
It seems like if we're going to do.
The 3 million marker might, it might, it might get all three fields at a million. We're not sure. I mean, we're guessing because of the track.
We were over budget on a couple of the other ones, especially Chancellors Run Road, Chancellors Regional, right? I'm sorry, mister, I can't see you sitting there.
No. Come back up, Mr. Shepherd.
You said Lancaster come in under a million, but some came in over because I know we had to fund 600 and some thousand or something.
Chancellors did. Chancellors is a larger footprint. Those two are real, both of the fields at Chancellors are greater both width and length than Chancellors and Chapiteco.
So they're not the same-sized fields?
No.
Okay.
You have more turf at both fields at Chapiteco than the other four. And then what that allows you to do is play nine v. nine sideways because in recreational ports, you're not just playing regulation fields, you're turning, you're playing side-to-side play. And then plus what that also does, you can, you do kitty kicks, small groups, that allows you probably with that square footage, two more practice teams that can be on there. Six or eight now instead of six because you, the good thing about turf fields, every square inch is good turf and the inclement weather.
It's all usable.
And then the last, let me just go to a commercial for Chancellors real quick. And here, with the size at Chancellors, we're getting ready to, starting next week, that's going to be a walking track for the seniors on the inside. Five lapses, 1.1 miles. That tells you the distance inside there as opposed to the others. Probably a good tenth of a mile. So that's going to be a walking track. But yeah, it's larger turf. So what's happening here at the schools, when you, if you do the whole turf inside of that track, so the measurement hadn't been made yet, so I don't know what that measurement is.
It hadn't been done.
Yeah. But that gives you more space, that gives you more practice space, there's more area. But you could come back and say, we're just going to turf this bit, seed inside the rest, but that probably wouldn't be effective operationally. So there's different things to do. But you can get them for a million, but when I talk to Mr. Yost, the regional director, because of grading and potential tear on the track and other things regarding the other activities, a high school field, it might get as high as 1.5. Those were his words.
Wow.
But you could get them for probably right, you could get them, you could get them at a mill, but you know 0.5 at each goes 1.5 additional, that's all. So it's going to be between 3 and 1.5. That's a big, that's a big variable, but that's what it is right now without going in and sizing them up, seeing what's actually there and making that first round of estimates.
I guess you mean it can be between 3 and 4.5 million.
And so when, I, I don't guess it there because that's the high number. I don't guess it's there. And I've seen enough of it. I've seen enough of the grading and what it takes. And remember now, these fields, and until to Dr. Smith, these are the best there is. You're not, there are different levels of quality, but, and everybody recognizes that. We had an out-of-county tournament this weekend. Everybody knows that they're standing on the difference and they're standing on something that's going to last.
Appreciate quality because it will last.
It will.
But tell me, the total for the three fields we just did this year, I thought that number was like 3.6 or something like that.
It, it, that's what it is. That's what it is.
I guess my point, Commissioner Morgan, is well over a million. Now, if you want to allocate or put 3 million out there as the number and as we coalesce around a more, better estimate, then we can figure out how to adjust it.
I firmly believe if we don't do, 3 million's the number, and we worry about how to get the rest later, we have, if we don't put this in a box, I don't think we'll ever come back to say, Dr. Smith, you're going to get three fields.
I agree with all that. I'm just trying to do all three of them at the same time.
Well, I agree, but I mean, I don't, I don't have the magic number in my head. I'm using a million dollars a field, 1.9999 plus one gives me three. If there's fund balance later, we can go back and replenish LoSAP dollars.
We look at it at a different date.
Yeah, we look at it this fall, we look at it, yeah, again, we have to.
Okay, so LoSAP goes to 2 million.
The additional.
Additional 2 million.
The additional story, 1.2.
Additional 3, additional 2.
There'll be 3.2 going to.
The one goes to.
I support it. Are you motioning it? And I'm seconding it.
Yeah. You got that, Dr., Mr. Cudmore?
Well, we have to vote on it.
What was the motion again?
I need a vote. Great.
Make the motion that we take the 1.999 million of the Board of Education's, make sure I got the word.
Nonrecurring.
Nonrecurring.
What they call it, they call it the nonrecurring costs. We added that 1 million of the LoSAP allocation to give us 3 million to go to turf fields. And the additional 2 million from fund balance be used to fund additional on top of the 1.2 we're already giving to LoSAP.
Okay, second discussion. How much more additional fund balance do we have left? Is, am I looking at total fund balance and?
Right now, if you were to.
1/6.
That was with, the 1/6 was additional, that was the balance after the 11, adding, using the 95 for the new vehicles, the 942, the 3 million, and then reducing it by the 1,999.
I guess I'm getting that is, we still have 1,600,000. So we get to that point in the road.
We worry about that.
We can still bite it off and get it done. So I, I think the, the good news here is, we'll have turf fields in the high schools.
Right.
That's the good news.
So that would be Pago and a Board of Ed project, CIP project for FY '22.
Yes, Pago.
For 2 million.
Well, two, well, 3 million.
I know, yeah.
3 million at this point.
3 million. Okay, right.
And what we'll be looking for is the final estimate and hopefully make the balance of the final estimate either out of their fund balance if they have it or our fund balance if they don't.
Right. And we can, I mean, if that was to be included in your 22 CIP, once we receive the final numbers and the actual, we can come, they would come back and then determine what was the shortfall. And then we'll determine that at that time. But I mean, right now, so you're saying 3 million for the CIP, Pago.
Well, is that what we're saying, Commissioner Morgan?
Comes out to 3 million for the CIP to build turf fields, one at each high school.
Yes.
Yes. So we have, we have motion.
And a second.
You have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody aye?
No.
No?
No.
So it's four ayes with one no? Let's hope, everybody heard? Okay, four ayes and one no.
Okay, hold on, let me catch up here. The Board of Ed turf field in FY '22, 3 million.
To start.
Okay. Now, LoSAP. Where are we at, Jody, as far as?
So if we start out with the fund balance of 3,652,000 and we reduce it by 95,000 for the vehicles, 942,428 for the vehicles, we do 2 million for LoSAP and an additional 1 million to the Board of Ed, which takes the 1,999 plus the other million for the turf fields, you get a fund balance reduction of 4,37,000. So we're in a deficit of 385,000.
Which is why I voted no.
Wait a minute, now, how?
How could that happen?
Help me through that.
Math, that's how it happened. Because nobody had time to scrub the numbers because it just got pulled in at the last second, like last week. Scrub the numbers, scrub the numbers, but.
Well, look, you're talking 95. What we're looking at now gives us a balance of 1,614. So if you take the 3 million and make it 2 million for LoSAP, and the 1,999 and make it 2,999, how's that change that?
Well, because in here, pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt. In here, we removed the 1.9 million to the Board of Ed.
Right.
So the Board of Ed didn't have anything if you're looking at that bottom number.
We were reducing it.
We were reducing it because they gave it back.
Ms. Cudmore, what will be our anticipated fund balance by December?
I do not have that answer, sir.
Right.
I am sorry. I'm not going to give you that answer today.
Yeah.
I won't get our final revenues until the end of August.
Right, okay, that's no problem. I think I have rough.
And your next one will be until November, right?
We'll be presenting our audit for 2022, for 2021 on December 7th.
Right.
Right, and I will not, I mean, our revenues will not be finalized until August.
I guess my thought is, we, if we leave the two with the Board of Ed, it means we've got to come up with potentially 1.5. And that way, it doesn't put us, I see what you're saying now because when you take the 2 million.
We were removing it.
You got to subtract the 1/6, that gives you 285,000 in the hole or something like that?
385, yeah.
285?
385, she said.
Okay, that's only by 100,000. Anyway, my point is, a lot of money's still in the hole. Seems the thing to do is do 2 million for those fields.
I can't hear you.
Do 2 million for those fields and come up with the extra million and a half later.
Once we get the estimates on the true cost.
Yeah.
Wow.
Because we still, we still going, we're committing to do.
I have to apologize to staff. I mean, literally, sitting here, trying to put numbers together on the fly, creates a deficit with a motion that is poorly fiscally planned. And now they're sitting here and these numbers in the 25th hour are coming out. This project can wait till December. This project can wait till we have fund balance. We don't need to put staff through this. Now, you just created a deficit because you can't do math. This is horrible. I apologize. You made a motion.
You got any better number?
I mean, for what it's worth, to his point, it's the very last budget work session and we're bringing forward a $3 million CIP project that we've never discussed before. I mean, that's pretty crazy.
It, it's horrible. You talk about proper fiscal sense. How about some respect for our staff that has to sit here?
Unity never got to weigh in on this at all.
The schools haven't weighed in, the board hasn't voted on it, okay? It's just insane. Not only that, but the point is, the people that are supposed to be responsible for the fiscal well-being of this county didn't even have the proper numbers before the vote. That's on the record. It created a deficit.
The deficit can easily be structurally handled. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to go into the drama that gets portrayed.
It's not drama, it's true.
It is drama.
It is, it is horrible fiscal planning. It's horrible fiscal planning.
To make amendment to, to amend it from 3 to 2.5.
That's fine.
And if you're.
You can't amend it, it's already been voted on.
And then, and I would, I would second the, if you consider that friendly amendment, that gets us back in the positive by about, what, 115,000?
You can't amend a motion that's already been passed.
It hasn't been voted.
It hasn't been voted on.
We already, it was 4 to 1 for the turf fields. That's what we got here. What do you mean it hasn't been voted on? It was 4 to 1. I voted no. They gave you the balance, it was a deficit. So either you're going to rescind that motion, make a motion to rescind the motion, and then make another motion based on the actual fiscal numbers, or what? Because it was 4 to 1. So, I mean, you were all sitting in the same room as me when you voted, right?
I was here.
Okay, you were here. I'm just making sure. I know Commissioner President was here.
I was here.
So I don't know how you do that.
What's the recommendation, a rescind of it?
The easiest way to do it is to rescind the vote and re-.
Rescind and then re-vote, okay. Do I have a motion to rescind?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last motion's rescinded?
Oh.
How's that? Okay, now, we need, we need a new motion now.
So the motion should be made, how, that we will take, was it 2 million?
2.5 or, yeah.
Staff doesn't even know.
Well, we know. If it's 2.5, they'll have a positive cash flow of 185, right?
That's correct.
Yes. Again, we're just, set aside money for these turf fields until we figure out what they cost. It's not hurting us.
Then go ahead and make the motion.
Second.
On what?
2.5 million will be used from the fund balance to pay for the turf fields.
But that doesn't give you equity.
Is that clear enough?
At least a positive, what, 114,000?
How many turf fields?
One and a half. Because they're 1.5 million each, so roughly one and a half fields. So there's no equity that was talked about before either, about all three at once. So, I think people are just throwing money at things at this point. Because there's no basis or foundation for it.
I think it would be fair to hear from the Board of Education before we move to put this CIP project on them.
I can't wait for the Board of Education, since we have to have a balanced budget in two weeks.
A day.
The Board of Education can bring this project forward at any point in time with any fund balance we have. Because we can go ahead and say in December, when we get our final numbers, that we're going to do this project, and we're going to move the money to the schools. It doesn't need to be in the budget.
Can we now have a motion for a-
We have a motion and a second.
2.5, a first and a second. Need a vote? All those for that motion?
That will leave us with a positive fund balance, correct?
Of 114-
114,000, she said.
Yes. So you've spent your entire 11 million dollars.
Good.
Okay, all those in favor of this last motion, 2.5?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No, one no.
No.
Oh, two noes, two noes. Okay, I'm sorry. Three yeses and two noes.
And then the low SAP amount, do we have the true number on that? Was that already voted for? Did we get a vote for the low SAP?
No, yeah.
2 million? A motion to 2 million.
You made a motion for 2 million for low SAP? Does that second?
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes ayes.
And that is now. Jody, can you confirm that number one more time for me?
114,522 is the balance.
And I would say you're done with your fund balance.
There you go.
Good.
Wow.
All right.
All right. What's left?
Yeah.
What do we have left?
What's left on our direction here? Can't wait to see.
So where are we at now as far as?
Approval of FTEs?
Right.
Now, can we use American Rescue to pay for the EMTs until the billing starts showing the results we anticipate?
Those are new FTEs.
We're not on that right now.
For emergency services, you mean on page four?
The 38 FTEs?
Yeah. Just use that out of American Rescue, and keep it contractual until we figure out if the billing is going to come in where we think it is.
Is that part of today's discussion, or is that coming in?
I thought it said approval of FTEs.
So on page four is the changes in positions for county departments and elected officials.
Right.
So I think Commissioner Hewitt's question, under emergency services, is that emergency service billing fund? The 32, 4, and the 1, and the 1, could those be used out of the American Rescue Fund to pay for contractual services? That's your question, and I think the answer is yes, it could be.
But it's until the billing money starts coming in-
Right.
And we can actually, again, I don't count those chickens till they hatch. But we're pretty much dependent on that 3 million, 2,922,000. And I guess if it's not there yet-
No, we weren't.
Comes out of general fund, right?
Didn't we have the money out of the emergency services support fund that funded the current positions that were already there, with a positive balance of $400,000?
All right. Right now, in the recommended budget, what's funding the emergency services billing is the 1.6 million-
Right.
From the emergency services billing, which is the 50% net of fee. And then we were taking money from the emergency services support from that revenue, your .024, and sending out over as a pay-go of 1.4 million. So right now, your emergency services billing fund is funded. And we had an excess of 239,000 that wasn't. So we did have a little bit of room in case the revenues didn't come in.
Excuse me.
But then the positions are in here as FTEs.
Okay, but when you say the 1.6 is funded?
That is what we're projecting at this point at a 50% collection rate.
I'm with you, but is it funded or is projected to be funded? Is it?
It's a revenue source that we're, it's a new funding source for this fund, based on the fees.
It's not there until we actually get it, right?
Right. Right. I mean, that's what would be just like any revenue. We don't have it until we actually collect it.
Usually when we do taxes, we get it.
Right. This is the projected, the amount that we would be collecting when the service starts.
From the insurance companies paying for the ambulances.
Right. Right.
I still guess I'd like to see it funded out of the American Rescue until we figure out if the money is there. If it's there, I'm on board. I think it's great that we're billing. I think it's a good idea. I just don't like to anticipate funding until I see it.
Well, the American Rescue can be used if necessary.
It could be, right now, you're funding it as, funding for contract services.
Yeah, so there's no need to-
At lieu of the positions.
There's no need to change what's currently there.
In the recommended, right.
Right, because the American Rescue, if anything happens, can be used. And then, of course, any fund balance that will be accumulated at a 3.5% growth rate come December.
Well, if we collect nothing, then we'll have to come up with the money somewhere else. That's the problem. But I firmly believe we'll collect at least 50%, if not more.
Yeah, I mean, based on what we had, and we used a conservative estimate in the recommended budget, it was 50% collection rate. And then, of course, we would adjust it just like any other special revenue or enterprise fund. Once the audited numbers came through, you would review it. So right now, the emergency services billing fund is okay, the way it was in the recommended. The question is, if you wanted to use, I think, well, at least I'm thinking the question is, instead of the positions, would you continue your current contract, would it be contracted?
Well, I'd say continue contract, because we've still got to figure out if the volunteers are coming back. And once you hire them, you got them. I mean, contractor, you still, you have your cake and eat it too. You haven't added them to your payroll to add them to your retirement benefits and all the other costs that come with being a county employee. That's still the charge of the contractor, but we still have the people in the buildings doing the service.
Right.
That's reasonable.
So the plan that the volunteers brought forward, that you requested for them to bring forward, that the experts said we need, you're going to say no to. So you can do the contract services that they said are not fully fulfilling what they need, because they need the positions and the contract services to cover what they're doing right now. So, what, for what? Why? Because they even said their volunteer staffing is never going to come back to where it was, and the problem already existed. So what is the sense of doing this?
Doing what now? I don't understand what you're talking about.
Extending the contract that the, the experts said is not fulfilling the complete need, which still isn't-
Experts said that?
Yeah. They sat right in front of you and came up with the plan.
You mean Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker, the RSA, eight individual ambulance companies.
Well, that's where the 38 positions came from, from the Rescue Squad Association.
So, I mean, the people that are running the calls, that are operationally doing this, have given you what they need.
So I'm just looking for a little clarification. Are you saying to go back on the staff that the county has already started to hire?
Have we hired them?
Yeah.
We have part-time folks that are on staff, that you may remember that was approved from the commissioners, maybe January.
Have we hired the 38 people here?
No, no.
No, I didn't think so.
This is part of the next budget.
I mean, whoever we've hired, we've hired.
Right.
My point is, is until we see the billing money come in.
Well, we've got the same bill either way.
Yeah.
But we got the American Rescue, and then if we get the money coming in, we can offset-
We can use that either way. So there's no logic in that.
I mean, realistically, you can keep the funding the way it already is in here. And you can make a decision on whether to keep the positions, or you can do contract services.
Yeah.
But I mean, the revenue, I would think, would stay the same.
Right.
Based on what you are estimating in billing, because you still want to continue your billing process that you, with the fees that were approved at the public hearing.
Well, maybe I just need clarification. When you ask for approval of FTEs-
Right.
I think I'm looking at 80.75.
Right.
And you're asking, do we hire to the county payrolls 80.75 people?
Right now, that's where we are, 80.75 FTEs.
Right. And if we were to take the EMT people and pay them out of contract, which is what we're doing now, and continue that for another year to see how billing keeps up, what's that do? It keeps us from hiring additional 38 people.
Right.
But still keeps them working in the county, being paid by a contract.
You would provide the same service. Now, I don't know, I mean, I'm not-
An absorbently higher rate.
On this type of service that the contract people are providing, or what the FTEs would be, I can't say that I am. But that could be something, I mean, it's possible.
I think we're going-
Like on any position, you could have a contract versus a full FTE.
And I'm for the contractual service too, because I really want to give our volunteers a chance to revive after this COVID-19 and get back on staff. We've lost so many of them, because I think Mr. Walker told me last week that we had about four incidents where we had to depend on Charles County and Coward County to come over and meet. And it wasn't because we didn't have paid, we didn't have the volunteers who were supposed to be on staff, were not working. So with that said, I would like to see, as we get more and more into this after COVID, we just had the masks go down and people getting vaccinated, to see where our volunteers come back in, and look at October, November timeframe to see how things are looking.
So, I don't disagree with that at all. I think it's, I strongly support hoping the volunteers come back and supporting them. However, they need to. I would remind you all that we all received a letter addressed to you, Mr. President, April 13th, from the Ambulance and Rescue Squad Association. And point number four recommends the transition of contract ALS staffing to career ALS staffing. We would recommend the continuation of contract staffing during the transition to ensure 24/7 staffing of the ALS chase car current for-
And I think this is all part of the transition, looking post-COVID again. Getting things back in order to see what our volunteers look like. And I think it's going to take up until this fall to do that.
This problem has been here for 10 years.
Look, you and I solved one of the problems in the 7th District by going over and having them put people on staff.
That's one, one company.
I know, but this has been complicated by the COVID problem. And I can understand a lot of the volunteers, especially our elder ones, are just not volunteer. And a lot of our daytime runners were people in their 60s, 70s, and 80s, for goodness sakes.
The 7th District came to us because pre-COVID, they couldn't get out during the day, okay? They couldn't get out, which was indicative of the overall problem in our entire system, which the volunteers have recognized that we already had this problem. So the, even if they come back, we're still addressing the same problem, ambulances not getting out. We already had volunteers, we didn't have enough contract staffing, and we had to rely on Dunkirk, we had to rely, an ambulance took an hour to get to somebody in the north end of the county that had a traffic accident, because-
And what we're discussing there first, number, let me just put a point out, EMTs are going to be either contract, right, or full-time staff, FTEs.
They said they need both. They literally told this board they need both to transition over a period of time.
I think Mr. Walker is going to bring us some good information by next week, right? The 25th is a briefing for Mr. Walker?
Maybe he can come up and help us out with this, since we're quoting him.
Well, I think his briefing next week will have some more fine tuning on us also, but-
Not sure if there is any help to this.
No, you're about right.
I didn't mean that in a lot of ways, but, you know, we've had some discussions with you, with you, and I think with you to some degree. But it's more complicated than you realize, and it truly is. We could do what you say, and we could save money, we can do that. In some ways, maybe that's a good thing, you know? I personally think at least get it started, and that really is a big question for you, is what is our end goal? Are we going to stay 100% volunteer? Are we going to go to contract services? If we are, we got to get started sooner or later. So I think that we need to do some of it, you know, at least to do some of it. You know, we could try to do it, but there's an underlying problem that's occurring right now. Today is an example of this. We can't staff the ambulances. We have all of our-
Contractors, we can't staff?
Can't do it.
Well, what makes us think we can do it if we hire?
Because then they're our employees, and then we have accountability, which we do not. We do not right now. So, and I'm not telling you to hire 32. It is a big chunk. I'm just telling you that we have to get there eventually, but today, today, right now, we can't staff. There are 10 ambulances deep, 10 departments they've called to try to get ambulances out. We have full complement of contractors right now. We've got full complement of our employees. And I have some of my staff that's outriding the ambulances right now to do it. So this is, this is a no-win situation for all of you and for me. It's, we can't do it. I'd just say that you keep enough people out there working and let us start to move towards it. How you guys want to do that, I can't decide it for you. But it is a very complex situation that we've all been rolling around with the past eight months, to be honest with you. Six months, whatever it is, plus October.
It got complicated by the COVID crisis. Pandemic really pushed it back.
Absolutely.
It pushed us to the top, no doubt about it.
But I think the question is, what's the end game? Do you want to stay volunteer 100%? Do you want to go to a paid? Because if you do, you got to get started sooner or later. So it's really in your court.
I don't think that's the question. I think the question is, when you dial 911, do you want to go 10 deep? I think that's the question.
Agreed.
Or when you dial 911, do you want the first available ambulance out, which is the first due, or possibly the second due? I really think that's the question that needs to be asked. Because career and volunteer, they've already solved that amongst themselves.
So you're saying that if we go with county, we're not going to have any problems getting our ambulance?
That's not what he said. Not what he said.
Oh, he said, he just said if we-
He did not say that.
He did not say that.
I mean, help me understand what the difference is, if a contractor has to hire people, or if we have to hire people?
One big difference is accountability, is that when they go out and do something inappropriate, we don't control that. We control it to some degree with a contractor, but one of our biggest issues is accountability. It truly is. You know, again, without, in this type of a meeting, there's certainly not room for discussion for that. But accountability is something we are working and dealing with every day since we've gone into this. So that's a big one. Again, I'm just telling you, we should start somewhere, hire some, you know, full-time, however many you decide to do, I think.
Well, tell us, how many would you want to get started with?
Commissioner, I know you want to do the whole thing, but do you know what? Give me 15 of them. That's half. That gets me a start. You know, that's at least, at least half of where we are, that gets us a start. But again, and I still say the question is, what is your intent? Is it to build a system, or is it to stay volunteer? If it's volunteer, you can go contract.
Mr. Walker, I think my intent as a commissioner is try and get ambulances out to the people who need them. That's my intent.
Agreed, me too.
Now, my way of getting there, of course, you know, we've talked about different scenarios. And what holds me back a little bit is this billing. Now, we've talked about we're going to only figure on 50%. I mean, look, if it comes in 80%, we can have all, everybody filled. And then, but I have heard from volunteers who feel like they're going to be put by the wayside. And it's something that's been part of the culture of this county for many, many years. Now, again, we haven't seen the effects of once we're out of COVID.
Right.
You know, I keep bringing up church, and it's not the same, but we're getting so many more people coming back. Nine o'clock mass on Sunday because they're vaccinated, they, you know, they're comfortable getting back out. And that may happen with the people, with the volunteers. Now, if it doesn't, look, I don't want us to hinder you. So if you're saying half, you think you can get away with half?
What to start with?
I'll support that.
I would support 16 FTEs right now.
Would the other halves have to still be continued as?
Has to be.
As contract?
To be contract.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, as we get closer into the wintertime, I'd say October, November, look that real close again and say, all right, let's add more FTEs we have to.
We'll give you a better assessment on where we are.
Well, can't you call out the cost by doing how much is January hires then? So the FTEs are approved, and then they're January hires?
They could be January hires, and contract for six months, and then January hires. I mean, maybe that would give you, but you would still be 38 positions. It would still be the same number of positions, it would just be a delayed until-
I can't, I know 15 was the number, and I know Mr. Walker's up here bargaining.
I am.
Which I feel horrible about, because you don't bargain with emergency medical services.
Okay, so-
Don't, no, 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 no. I have point of order, I have the microphone, so-
Give your point of order.
My point of order is, I'm speaking. You can't interrupt me. So, the, you're bargaining with these 15 positions. So has the RSA or anybody supported the 15 positions from an expert's point of view?
No, I haven't had that discussion.
Okay. All right. And we're worried about the 1.6 million, is that what we're talking about, or 1.3 million?
That's, you're talking about the emergency service billing?
Mm-hmm.
That's how much the revenue we're expecting to come in. I mean, that was, that came from the contractor.
Okay. Fund balance, fund balance, fund balance could have been used to cover that just in case, right? For the, as a, if there was a shortfall?
Well, it depends on how you're funding. Are you funding your positions with recurring, which would be FTEs? Or are you funding it as a contract?
Right.
And the contract could be non-recurring.
Okay, thank you.
But we are, I mean, that's why we're moving over the 1.4 million dollars from the emergency services support fund, because we're using that recurring funding from that fund to pay for the recurring expenses of the FTEs.
Yep.
Mr. Connor, you have a point on this now? You want to make a recommendation or what?
No, my point of order was, I had the microphone.
Well, continue speaking then.
I can go get green eggs and ham if you want. I mean, the way this is going, I mean, that's it.
So you have a motion or something you want to make after all this, or?
You see, a point of order is when a speaker is interrupted on the floor by somebody else when they're occupying the microphone. So that's what you say point of order. It's in Robert's Rules of Order. But, you know, once I'm done speaking and I stop-
You're done now?
And I relinquish the microphone like I did, the point of order is done.
You're done now? Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this behalf?
Mr. President, I would motion that we hire 16, get started with 16 EMTs, and do the residual with contract. And if Mr. Walker wants to come in on a later date and say, that's not working, we look at it. But my motion is to hire 16 and have the residual on contract.
I'll second it. Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying it's a bad idea to bring it up at the last minute on the last work session when we've already come this far with so many different groups being involved in it.
Well, it's here for approval.
It is, and it's the last hour of the last budget work session.
This is called decision time.
So I vote no.
Well, it's 2-1. Then we have a first and a second. Your votes? Yes?
No.
No?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Yes. And Mr. Walker can come back next week with a little better discussion on it, right?
Mr. Walker, just, thank you. This is, you're not in an easy position. This has been a long time, and it, we all, all of us up here, you out there, the citizens are what comes first. And I recognize that. And we have different ideas on how to get there, but we all want what's best for our citizens. So thank you for all you're doing with this.
I did say early in the year, everything that's being proposed, we need. The question is, at what point, and, you know, when are we going to lay it all out? So I do think we need to get there. Again, the question is, at what point? It is very challenging. Today is a really bad day in the county for ambulances. And the weekends are right now, and I will tell you that the weekends, again, they really aren't impacted by COVID. It's because people are getting out and don't want to run, and it's tough right now. So we're having a real tough time with it, so.
So I would, thank you, Mr. Walker, for coming up.
Thank you, sir.
I would keep the funding in the emergency services billing fund the same, but we would just only have 16 EMTs, and then the balance, we would put towards contract. Just to keep the expenses the same would be great.
Okay, good, good.
Do that. So that does bring your FTEs down to 64.5 FTEs. Any other proposed changes to FTEs?
Obviously not. Continue on.
Okay.
Next one is a nonprofit. We figured that out, right? Next one is a nonprofit, we figured that out, right?
Right. Well, that was the one point, that was the $1,500 for growing stems, and you said yes to that.
And you had to use a fund balance on new vehicles, you got that figured out, right?
I've got that figured out. On page seven, direction on change in income tax rate and growth percent.
Well, last week, we had discussed going to 4%. We're reducing the tax rate from 3.17 to 3.1, but we never voted on it.
Right.
So, I'm going to make the motion today that we increase our growth to four, or reduce the income tax rate from 3.17 to 3.1.
Second. Got a first and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Everybody aye?
So, that adds.
You aye?
I spoke.
Everybody catch all, there was all ayes?
I'm guessing. Did you say yes, John?
I did, twice.
Okay, ayes, unanimous now.
Mr. Connor, did you say yes?
So, we're adding.
Yeah, I did.
So, we're doing our rate down to, income tax rate down to 3.1.
Correct.
As of January 1, 2022.
Correct.
And a 4% growth.
Correct.
Which will bring our income tax revenue down to 120, 75966, which is an additional 88,464 in revenue, Jody.
That was, what page is that on, J?
Yeah, we're down to 114,000, right?
So, that goes to general revenue.
That's general revenue. That's a recurring revenue. So, where are we at now, as far as our revenue excess and shortfall, Jody?
The revenue excess is 797,617.
How much, please?
797,616.
So, for $800,000, I would ask, the question allowed, remember, I'm in equality, if we gave the Board of Ed, the sheriff, the county employees all a 0.25 or 0.3% pay raise, what would that give us at the end of the day?
I have another little fancy-wancy sheet, just in case. So, if everybody got an extra 0.25, that would be a cost combined increase of 492,000.
That's 797,000.
Right.
And if we went to 0.3, you got any idea what that would be?
Yes, sir. It'd be 590,423.
Well, then, I'd say, based on equality, that we increase everyone by 0.3.
So, the cola goes from one to?
Cola goes from one to 1.3, and that gives us $200,000 at the end of the day.
Second. Is that, is that right? That figures out, you say, you said 0.3?
Yep, 0.3. And then, that would be an additional 210 for the county and 380,423 for Board of Ed.
So, how much for Board of Ed, 400?
That's almost 400,000, so 380,423.
So, they would need about 400,000 of their own to figure out, to fund everything.
Yes.
Yeah.
They said they needed 779,000.
And we're giving them 400 more.
So, we gave them four.
So, they need seven, 379.
Right. So, where, where does that give us as far, what are we down to, Jody?
What's the total of the 0.3 cola?
It's an additional 492, oh, no, I'm sorry, 590,423. That's a reduction of expenses by 590,423.
Okay, so I increased expenses for a cola of 0.3% at 590,423. That includes county and Board of Ed. And then, our excess revenue is 207,194.
So, if I got it correct, if the 590, 210 goes to the county, and the sheriff, and 30 goes to the Board of Ed?
380 goes to the Board of Ed, 380,423.
Okay, so if you multiply 300 times 2, that's 760, so halfway. So, they'd have to come up with the difference.
The Board of Ed would. Right. So, that leaves us, what, the 220?
207,194.
207,194.
As I increase the expenses by 590,423.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is the motion?
I'll suck at it.
Again, you second?
I know, he motioned, didn't he?
I made the, you second.
No, your motion was, got the motion straight now? Do we have the motion straight?
That's a 3%ing.
Can you read the motion again?
Mm-hmm. Oh, Jeanette, can you read the motion?
Can you read the motion? Did you write it down?
Really? Don't make me do that.
Motion to approve an additional 0.3% cola.
Okay.
To county employees and the Board of Ed.
And the Board of Education.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How many nays?
No.
No.
Two nos.
Okay, and then that brings us down to your 207, Jody?
Yes.
So, your next one is the updated tax credit?
Right. So, that would be, that's on page eight. Thank you. It was nice that I put those page numbers there, wasn't it? Right, so the, that's on page eight. So, to expand the existing credit, that would be like a 272,100, or do no credits, and wait and see how the 2.5 million dollar refunds.
I mean, that looks like the thing, because that's a big number, 2.5.
That's what Mike Diggan said, that our possible impact would be.
I think in light of the unknown, I'm not in favor of changing any of the tax credits at this time.
We need, we need more information on it.
I'll make a motion that we do not update the tax credits.
Per.
Discussion, that's separate from the original veterans' tax deductions, though.
This is something that just came out of Annapolis.
Right, so I don't want it to be confused with the original veterans' tax credit that we could have applied, but this one's totally new, so.
Right, and any tax credit would be a reduction of revenue, and you only have 207 left.
I just didn't want any blurred lines that, you know, this is a separate tax credit that was added after the fact. This wasn't the original one we were talking about.
Correct.
So, we, we could have done something on the original one, but.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think the motion says we're not doing anything.
We're not doing any tax credit changes, right?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion for that, or not? Do we need a motion?